All right, welcome everybody. We will start the May 13, 2024, meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. If the clerk will help me out with the roll call, please.
Albertini.
Here.
Brereton. Brereton is absent. Flurry.
Here.
Frank. Frank is absent. Freeman.
Here.
Gramkowski.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal. Mahal is absent. Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Seven, President.
Okay, thank you. We don't have anybody registered for public comment this evening. There is no public forum. We have reports of officers, boards, and specials, special committee, building, planning, zoning, unfinished business. We have none. Building, planning, zoning, new business, planning and zoning department, Ms. Del Ros.
Thank you. There are three cases before Plan Commission tomorrow, a variance for self-storage units on Locust Street, replating two residential lots into one because the gentleman would like to install a pool and maybe another accessory structure. And then the gas station next to Little Caesar's is up for public hearing again. After his extension was denied, he did reapply to start the process all over again. So you will be seeing that soon. Zoning verification letters are still staying consistent. I completed the end-of-year CLG report for the state for historic preservation. Heritage Days, just chugging along on that. Completed the annual report. We should be on your guys', in your packets. Working on wrapping up this last year's facade grant so I can start sending out the new ones. And attended a child abuse awareness event. So stuff has been pretty steady. Heritage Days is going to be my main focus this week.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Del Ros? All right, Gina, did you say that Belvedere Park District had applied for a pool permit?
No. No, I did not know. It's, there's two ways to combine lots, for residential lots. You can either just combine your two PIN numbers so you get one tax bill, but the property is still legally described as two separate parcels. You just get one tax bill. A lot of times people do that if they just want to hold on to the yard space for a little bit. The other way to do it is to actually legally reconfigure those two lots into one, vacate that interior lot line, and record a new legal description. So this gentleman wants to, instead of just using the yard space as yard space, he wants to construct a pool and, I believe, a shed and some other things. So since he'd actually be building on it, he is combining it into the same lot as his house.
Got it. Thank you very much. I had my hopes up. Any questions for Ms. Del Ros? All right, thank you, Gina. Item three on the next page, Public Works Unfinished Business. We have none. Item four, Public Works New Business. We have a few of those. We'll start out with item A, Public Works Department Update. Public Works Director Henderson.
Thank you, Your Honor. First up on the update, at your desk tonight is placed the copy of the Water Service Survey. That will be going out to all of the residents of residential and commercial establishments built prior to 1986 that has not already submitted a survey back to us. Those are going to be direct mailed. This is what's going out in the mail and as our next wave of notification. And then we'll follow up with a second request if we need to further down. Completion is set for this fall, I believe, as we have to have this wrapped up. This is part of our LED grant, LED Service Survey Grant that we received from IEPA. So this is the next step in that process. Those will be mailed out. We're still working with the post office on bulk mailing, so this should go out hopefully by the end of next week. The other item on the update, another handout at your desk tonight, the blue sheet of paper. Water Department now is beginning to do, has begun online payment arrangements, pay by phone, automatic withdrawals from the account withdrawals and so forth. So the information is, will hand out there that's available. If there's any questions or people that want to get signed up, they can contact the Water Department to take care of that. That's all the updates I have.
All righty, any questions for Mr. Anderson? Alderwoman Gramkowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Brent, on the Water Service Survey, it says the city is required to get 100% participation. What if we don't?
Well, so if we go through the second notice and we still don't get response, then we put a door hanger out and said your water will be shut off until we get in there and get that done, so.
Thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
Is this something that people can test themselves to see?
They can do the inspection themselves. If they have any questions or concerns, they can certainly call us and make an appointment with us and we'll come out and do it. It's basically, the toughest thing anymore is to get access into the basement where we need to get to where the service is coming in.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions regarding either item Mr. Anderson had? All right, thank you. We'll go to item B, ordinance authorizing the sale of certain personal property, public works vehicles. Mr. Anderson?
In your packet is a draft of the ordinance with the list, page three, of the vehicles that we need authorization to dispose of. Most of these will probably, well, we'll put them out in the auction, see where we get. We'll have minimums on there for scrap value, so. One way or another, they'll be leaving our establishment.
Okay. This will come back then if we approve this. This will come back as ordinance then in two weeks. Does anybody have any other questions about this? Could I have a motion to this effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderwoman Gramkowski, and as Mr. Anderson said, the itemized vehicles are on the Exhibit A attachment. If there's any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor to approve ordinance authorizing the sale of certain personal property, city vehicles, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. And item C, Water Facility Easement and Maintenance Agreement, OM Belvedere Group, Mr. Anderson?
A memo in your packet, OM Belvedere Group has completed a water main loop on their property to provide fire hydrant coverage of their semi-truck parking area. Due to the conflicting requirements of IEPA and the Illinois Department of Public Health, this water main loop needs to be part of our municipal system. Attached to this memo is the Water Facility Easement and Maintenance Agreement whereby the water main will be owned by the city and maintained by the property owner. I would recommend approval of the Water Facility Easement and Maintenance Agreement as presented. If you go to the very last page there, Exhibit A, it'll show you the location of the easement and the portion of the water main that's in private property, but again, will be city-owned and maintained by the property owner in order to meet the requirements of both IEPA and the Illinois Department of Public Health.
Okay, could I have a motion to recommend approval for the easement and maintenance agreement as presented? Motion by Alderman Albertini, second by Alderman McGee. Thank you both. Any questions, any concerns regarding the motion or the information in your packet? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. And moving on, item D, which would be well number 11, Facility Design Engineering Services. Mr. Anderson has a memo dated May 6 of 2024 regarding this. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. The drilling of new well 11 is scheduled to begin in mid-June. We have a proposal that's attached to the memo from Strand Associates in the amount of $397,000 for the engineering and design of the well 11 facilities, which will include a pump house, filtration systems, 500,000 gallon reservoir, and booster pumps. The preliminary estimate of construction cost to complete this project is $9,594,000. The engineer's design summary report will be submitted to the IEPA for their review and approval as part of the construction permit application. This process is expected to take 10 months to complete. Project number L 176580 is considered Phase Two of our EPA loan program project. Principal forgiveness and perhaps PFAS funding will be included in this loan also. I would recommend approval of the Engineering Services Agreement with Strand Associates for the engineering and design of the well 11 facilities in the amount not to exceed $397,000. This work will be paid for from the IEPA loan program. As you may recall, we received 100% forgiveness on our Phase One loan, which covers the complete cost of the drilling of the well itself. Once that work is completed, which will be later this, probably early fall by the time that's done, and they do the pump test, the results of that pump test will tell us how much has to be designed for, allowed for upfront as far as treatment costs, depending on the quality of the water that we're going to be getting out of this new well. So once we have that information, they can begin their work now with what has to be done, but we'll know, once we have the pump test done, we'll have, give us a real good indication of exactly what we have to design for. The booster pumps and the reservoir will replace what we have currently down at well number three. That reservoir is an old concrete structure that's been there for a long time, and it's getting to the point that it needs to be replaced. Hopefully, through the principal forgiveness and hopefully PFAS funding, the state will pick up a share of that cost as well. That's why we're going to include it all now as this submittal, in the submittal, and see what happens with their IEPA review. Regardless, it still is work that needs to be done at some point in time, whether it's done initially or can come later perhaps. It's yet to be determined, but that's what we're looking at. The other big change is between Phase One and Phase Two is the IEPA loan program has now gone to 30 years. So before all these projects were 20-year returns, now they're 30-year returns. So it'll cost us a little bit more in financing, but actually it'll be less payment, so it'll work out probably in our favor long-term wise. Again, I would recommend approval of the Engineering Services Agreement with Strand.
Okay, if I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Thank you both. Any questions regarding the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Okay, motion passed. And just as a follow-up, I did receive today, there was a press release from the state of Springfield, and it did announce that the city of Belvedere was on the list for the Phase One loan forgiveness of, as Mr. Anderson said, $1,478,842, which there isn't a whole lot of them on the list, but what we got here? Seventeen. Seventeen communities that were mentioned in the press release regarding loan, $20.6 million in loan forgiveness granted to recipients with the city of Belvedere being one of them. Alderman Albertini?
I have a quick question on this, and maybe I'm mistaken. I thought I saw on the news Steve Sattlemen getting us money for this well. Is this a fact?
I don't believe so, no. This is all, this well, I mean, he has, he has definitely helped us with some downtown development and, but none that I'm aware of anyhow.
Okay, because I thought I just saw a brief thing on Steve Sattlemen saying that Belvedere deserves quality water.
Probably referencing.
And he was talking about $3 million, but I guess I misunderstood it. It went in a flash of a pan, so I didn't comprehend it.
Yeah, it was the Illinois EPA that he probably was well aware, he was probably well aware of it before I was. And, but it would have been the amount of money that was forgiven on the Phase One in total, so I'm sure that's what he was referencing.
Okay, thank you.
Not to say that he didn't have anything to do with it, but I, not that I'm aware of. Okay, thank you. Moving on, item four E, U.S. Department Transportation Notice of Funding Opportunity Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvements Program. Notice Chrissa, Chrissy, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packet, the United States DOT has issued a notice of funding opportunity for their 2024 Chrissy program. To date, we have secured $1,666,279 in Chrissy funds for the Phase One engineering and environmental review of our Appleton Road grade separation project. We have applied to IDOT and ICC for additional engineering funds as well. The current cost is, and also, we've also applied to Senator Durbin's office also for funding. The current cost estimate to complete the design of this project is $3 million and $30 million to construct this project. Grant applications are due by 5:00 PM on May 28, 2024. Attached to this memo is a proposal from Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick, our certified bridge managers, in the amount of $14,000 to complete the grant application for Phase Two design, engineering, and construction funding. Their work will include an updated cost estimate for the construction of this project. I would recommend approval of proposal from HLR in an amount not to exceed $14,000 to complete the updated cost estimates and FRA Chrissy had grant application for the Appleton Road grade separation project. This work will be paid for from line item 4151108025.
Okay, if I could get a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Stevens, thank you. And if I could get a second, second by Alderman McGee, thank you. Any questions, any comments? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So Brent, do we have any idea when we're looking to start this project? Are we looking like way out, like '26 or in the next year?
No, from the timeframe goes, the engineering process is probably going to be about a three-year process to get through the engineering until you're ready to get to construction. So right now, we'd be looking at '24, '25, '26, probably '27 at the FY '27 at the earliest probably for construction.
Thank you.
And this, the amount of, well, we have the motion, we have the motion and the second on the floor to approve the Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick in the amount not to exceed $14,000. I guess if there's any other questions regarding that? And hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed. Just so, so we had applied previously, I had had some discussions with Congressman Foster regarding, obviously, Stellantis, and then some of the other successes we've had in regard, regarding what will be a transportation issue here. And the $3 million for the engineering study, we had talked about that, I think, a little bit last week with 1.66 million in this case being an opportunity of funding regarding, from the U.S. Department of Transportation. So he did certainly understand potential for issues here as we continue to grow. We've had, as we have talked about before, we've had a transportation snafu along Appleton Road. And so by applying, as Brent said, to the ICC and to IDOT, but also Senator Durbin for congressional spending count, I'm hopeful between those, we can get the 1.3 million and change that is left over to go ahead and secure the engineering study. And I believe, once we get that, the other part of that project will be secured. So that's where we're at. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again. So in regards to the passenger rail, I know that's some years out as well, but they won't be doing that before this, right?
Before this? They, well, I really don't know. I, you know, I think this would come later. This would come later, but who knows? I mean, at one time, they thought they were going to have passenger rail here 10, 15 years ago, and it just didn't come to fruition. But theoretically, I guess, this would be after, which was one of the case, one of the arguments, that we are going to have passenger rail potentially, that would be on the same tracks, that the freight will be moved out of Stellantis, which, you know, we were successful with Stellantis wanting to reopen here, going to reopen here. But I think we know, I've known that, and we've known, we've had a problem here for a long time, and I thought this would be a good chance to connect the dots and try and go after the funding. But as Mr. Anderson said, this will be a process to get the engineering, get the funding. Hopefully, we will get the funding this year, and then the process with the engineering will be another part of it, and then follow-up will be the construction end of it. Mr. Anderson?
So in answer to your question as far as the schematics, the ICC determined two years ago that grade gates were required at the crossing on Appleton. So that improvement has been completed. That's probably the major single cost-effect item at that particular crossing for the passenger rail service. So, and that was paid for through the state, through the ICC, and the railroad is how that got done. So the fact that we're coming in now and this grade separation proposed won't have any impact on the passenger rail because that, that part of it has already been identified. And in fact, if this comes to fruition, then the city will actually get paid for removing that crossing, take it out of, out of service. And right now, the ICC and the ICC, IDOT, and the railroad all contribute to cross enclosures, which we'll talk about in other areas here coming up.
So the, the construction of this won't interfere in any way with the, with the rail?
No, it'll all be designed and stuff to create that so that there won't be no interruptions in service.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we move on? All right, hearing none. Move to item F. Mr. Anderson has a memo again dated May 6 of 24 in your packet regarding a 20-inch plug valve replacement at the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Anderson?
Again, memo in your packet, Williams Brothers Construction's contract includes the replacement of 20-inch plug valve that controls the flow of wastewater to and from our detention pond at the wastewater treatment plant. It is a deep valve located 20 feet below grade. During excavation for this valve replacement, groundwater was encountered prior to getting to the valve depth, and conflicts with existing piping were uncovered that were not known during project design. Additional excavation, de-watering, and shoring will be required to complete this work. We have received a proposal from Williams Brothers Construction, the amount of $333,693.04 to complete this additional work. They have also offered a $10,000 credit if we remove the valve replacement from the contract. We had three area excavation firms review this project, and we received one proposal to complete this work. NTRAC group submitted a proposal in the lump sum amount of $75,000 to replace the 20-inch plug valve. Their price does not include de-watering beyond a 3-inch pump. Given the nature of this project, I am including an additional $25,000 for de-watering and $25,000 in contingency for an estimated replacement cost not to exceed $125,000. I would recommend approval of lump sum proposal from NTRAC in the amount of $75,000 and the total estimated project cost of $125,000 to replace the 20-inch plug valve at the wastewater treatment plant. This work will be paid for from line item 6158206190. And if council approves, this will be, this work will be scheduled probably the second or third week in June, depending on, on the weather.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Stevens, thank you, and a second. Second by Alderman Snow, thank you. Any questions regarding that discussion and the motion on the floor?
Question. So if you look at that diagram here, is the actual valve actually located?
So if you look at this page here, it's main equipment building. Got some other piping and stuff around those areas which creating a conflict. And keep in mind, when this was last done in 1985 as part of the project, the whole entire area around there was excavated out. It was one big giant hole, so they could put everything together and they had access and room to it. And now we're coming in at this point in time just needing to get to that valve, and that's what's creating this difficulty is the fact that it's confined and we still got to work around everything, and it's not all opened up. They took the worst-case scenario. They basically said, well, we're going to have to open it all back up and support all the piping and do all this stuff. And NTRAC came in and says, no, I think we can do it this way, and by doing these, using these methods, we can, we can keep it reduced down scope-wise.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor for approval of the lump sum proposal from NTRAC for total project cost of $125,000 at the wastewater treatment plant for a 20-inch plug valve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And item G, in your packet is a memo from Mr. Anderson, request to vacate property regarding parking lot seven remnants. Mr. Anderson?
Again, memo in your packet, the city has received two grants to fund our municipal parking lot number seven rehabilitation and overlook project. Construction of this project will place, take place during the 2025 construction season. There's a portion of city-owned property as highlighted on the attached platification that is not needed for the improved parking lot. I would recommend vacating the highlighted parcels to the adjoining property owners. Proper notices will be provided to the adjoining property owners prior to the actual vacation. 129 North State, 131 North State, and 117 East Lincoln Avenue. There are no city-owned utilities located within the alleys. If you go to the, probably the third page, which would be this one with the real nice bright highlighted colors on you. So the green and the, and the pink are the two addresses from State Street that we'll be adding to. The 117 Lincoln address gets the orange and blue on the north end. It goes to, it's just one property owner, just two different parcels, but still the same owner for those two parcels. And again, in the design of the, the final design of the parking lot, this area does not do us any good. It will be much more beneficial to be under the ownership control of those adjoining property owners.
All right, we have a motion then to vacate that property regarding parking lot seven. Those addresses are 129 North State Street, 131 North State Street, and 117 East Lincoln Avenue. Do we have a second? Second by Alderman Albertini, thank you. Any questions, any other further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. And moving along, item H, purchase of an end loader. And moving on, item H, purchase of end loader forks for the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Anderson has a memo as well dated May 7th in your packet. Mr. Anderson?
So the city council has previously approved our purchase of the 2023 John Deere 624P end loader, which we did so we could use it during the snow removal season. A new set of forks for that end loader is $8,200. And I would recommend the purchase of that set of forks for the 2023 John Deere 624P end loader from Westside Tractor Sales in the amount of $8,200. The forks will be paid from depreciation line item 611790, $7,400, which is the balance of what we had budgeted for the equipment purchase, and line item 615-820-6030, the $800 to make up the difference.
All right, could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Stevens, thank you. And a second. Second by Alderman McGee, thank you. Any questions regarding the motion on the floor? Alderman Albertini?
These forks, what are we going to use them for?
To move pallets, to move, move equipment, move, when we have the centrifuges, when we need to pull those out, let's all require forks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the motion? Right hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Moving on, we have four aye, which is wastewater treatment sludge pump installation. In your packet again is a memo dated May 7th from Ms. Director Anderson regarding this. Director Anderson?
Memo in your packet, probably six to eight months ago now, city council approved the purchase of the replacement Moino and Wemco pumps. There's two of each, total of four. The installation and piping costs, we received two proposals, Seroni piping in the amount of $102,28, Bowler Construction $145,999.70. And the electrical component of each of both of those two sets of pumps to get them installed, Helma Electric was $14,840, Connolly Electric Company was $22,000. Couple motions I'm looking for, I would recommend approval of proposal from Seroni piping in the amount of $102,28 for piping and installation of the Moino and Wemco pumps at the wastewater treatment plant. And that, those will be paid for from 611790.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by, a motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens, thank you both. We have that motion on the floor. If there's any questions, any follow-up for Mr. Anderson? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor for the proposal from Seroni piping and the, the low bid in the amount of $102,28 for the piping and installation of the pumps at the wastewater treatment plant, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And Mr. Anderson?
The next motion would be recommend approval of proposal from Helma Electric to complete the required electrical work for the installation of the new Moino and Wemco pumps at the wastewater treatment plant at a cost of $14,840. And this, again, this work will be paid for from line item 611790.
Okay. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Stevens, thank you. And a second from someone. Second by Alderman McGee, thank you. Any questions regarding the low bid for, from Helma Electric on the electrical part of this project? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Item J, we have passenger rail update, and your packet is a memo from Director Anderson dated 5/7 regarding passenger rail update, station location, and subsequent or corresponding road closing. Mr. Anderson?
Again, memo in your packet, the Illinois Passenger Rail Chicago to Rockford service includes a station stop in Belvedere. Attached to this memo is a copy of the station location concepts prepared by IDOT. IDOT is requesting confirmation from the city for our preferred station site. In 2014, the city council approved the location at the Whitney Boulevard right-of-way adjacent to City Hall, which will require the closing of the street. This same location today will require a variance be issued by the Union Pacific Railroad due to their design standard of 300 feet offset from crossings for a passenger platform. The proposed 380-foot platform will be centered on the Whitney right-of-way. I would recommend that the city council formally approve the Whitney location of the Belvedere train station and have IDOT submit a variance request to the Union Pacific Railroad. And again, attached to the memo is the concept designs for council's reference. The west options, one and two west options, the dark shaded areas shown on that display would be the platform locations and station possibility locations for that, which would be down across from the entrance into the skate park at the Park District. The east option is, would be located, basically centered between Main Street and Warren Avenue off of Pleasant Streets. And then our recommendation, recommendation, same as it was in 2014, would be the Whitney location, which will require the closing of Whitney Street. It will also require some modifications to the intersection at West Pleasant and State Street. And those would be, alternatives and stuff will be brought forward as well.
With that being said, could I have a motion with the recommendations that we had just, that were just mentioned, please? Motion by Alderman Stevens, and a second. Second by Alderman McGee, discussion. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again, Mayor. So previously, I hadn't even thought about the west option. And, and I understand fully the concept of locating the station downtown. But there are some things that I, I think maybe we should consider as far as parking. So this lot out here, the one with the mailboxes, is that where the train parking would potentially be for the, for the one here?
That would be part of it, yes.
So, every, I take the train a lot, but I go to Harvard and take the train to Chicago all the time. And you have to pay for parking, so that would potentially be like train-paid parking spots like every other station around?
It would be established as whatever city council's directive to how they want that established.
Okay.
The, the, back in 2014, when they were looking at that, the planners had put together actually that there would be the possibility of a parking deck placed in that area to increase that parking availability for the station location at that point.
Okay, because like, don't, I mean, for like Heritage Days and stuff like that, that parking lot gets used municipally. And even like, don't strolls sometimes have like a car show there and, and use that parking lot as a municipal lot. So would we consider, behind it there where the old iron and coal and container place was going to be, would, would we be considering expanding that back there? Because, you know, you got the, the dog park right there, and people park for that. So if it's going to be paid parking for the train, then I'm just, I don't know, I'm just thinking about that.
Well, again, the, the paid parking, whether it's paid parking, how that arrangement's done, it would be up to city council at some point in time when that's done. You have the, the green space that's adjacent to our, the City Hall parking lot, if you will. Normally parking lot seven, City Hall parking lot, the green space there, you can take advantage of. There's, there's some other areas in, nearby that could be utilized as well. And again, long-term wise, one of the concepts that was done was renderings, was a, a raised parking deck facility too, depending on, on how it plays out and how it's, the reception that we get for passenger rail going forward. So the greatest flexibility for parking actually is the metal, is the Whitney location as opposed to the other two that were presented by IDOT.
I just, I just, like, I know, I think the current schedule didn't have the train coming seven days a week and multiple stops. But in the future, if that were to happen, I just worry about losing a municipal lot, that's all.
I understand. I understand, good points. Alderman Snow?
So in this case, in this case, will they wind up applying for all the, all three easements and secure those, or will they pick one and go that route?
No, they're looking for the city to confirm which location we desire for the station location, because the Whitney one will require the variance now from the Union Pacific. So for IDOT to move forward, to have their consultants prepare the paperwork and do the necessary application for that variance, they want to know that the city is on board, and that is their preferred site location, which is why we're here tonight, to get a, get a recommendation from city council to do that.
Your Honor?
Yeah, Alderman Snow?
So at this point, the motion on the table is for the Whitney location here?
Correct.
And in order for, in order for the city to move forward, as Mr. Anderson had pointed out in his memo, that we would be looking for a variance from the UP in order to do this project. Mr. Anderson?
So another factor, I guess, is, is a part of the, the road closing on Whitney. So it was indicated to us by IDOT's consultant that in this case, as we, when we do a road closure, crossing closure, right now, funding is at, IDOT is $100,000, ICC is $100,000, and the railroad is $100,000. So right now, the going rate is about $300,000 for, if you close a crossing, and eliminate the crossing. In this case, because we are requesting a variance from Union Pacific Railroad, we would probably get the $100,000 from the ICC, $100,000 from IDOT, and we would not get anything from Union Pacific in consideration of their granting the variance request.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. Also, I was thinking, there's only one track there, and typically, there's a incoming and outgoing for passenger rail, so would they be adding another track there? And how would that impact the, the space?
So back in 2014, when they had that iteration come through, they were going to then put a second track in, but it was going to begin west of Fifth Avenue and go out to the yard, past to the, to the yard limits. In this case, this go-around, they've indicated Union Pacific does not, is not requiring any kind of additional trackage this time around. We are making provisions for the grade separation, and that's part of the Hampton-Lenzini-Renwick work that they will need to do in order to accommodate an additional rail, future rail that would be located basically to the north of the existing mainline rail now. But as far as this passenger rail this time around, no additional track.
Thank you.
Also, this, essentially, we need to have the variance before we can, we can proceed. So we need to request this, if in fact, for the Whitney Street location, if we decide to move forward with that. So I guess you got to crawl before you can walk, and that's the, that's the step that we're at now. So Alderman Fleury?
Thank you. Back when they did that study in 2014, did they take in account, as they picked these three options, like what would have the effect on traffic that's going on State Street or Main Street? Because depending on where the train stops, would depend on, you know, how long the train's going to be stopped and which roads be closed, or is that not a factor?
It could be a factor, however, State Street would not, they wouldn't stop on State if it's going to be blocked for a short period of time, maybe Main Street.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Your Honor. As the mayor said, disregard the WWTP. It is actually, this is a piece of equipment is for the street department. The current street department budget includes $150,000 for the replacement of our 1974 CAT end loader. We have received following proposals for a new end loader, Bobcat, Case, CAT, and John Deere, the cheapest of those being a Bobcat at $99,748.68. All of these end loaders are in the same size classification and come with extended warranties. The Bobcat machine has a 60-month, $2,000 warranty. Members of our street department had gone out to the local Bobcat store and demonstrated this particular piece of equipment in person, and all were satisfied with that. And based on the above information, I would recommend the purchase of the Bobcat L95 end loader from Bobcat of Rockford in the amount of $99,748.68. The end loader will be paid for from capital line item 415-752-8200.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Fleury, second by Alderman Stevens, thank you both. Any questions or comments on the motion? Alderman Snow?
I'd be remiss if I, if we didn't ask, did we look to see if we could find a decent used one? And the second question is, on the paperwork, it never says what model year that this machine is, so just curious.
It's 2024, new model year. And no, we did not look for a used one, because the pricing was so favorable for us on the new one.
All right, thank you. And the replacement was a 1974 model, so hopefully, we would get as long, much longevity out of this as we did the 1974, but I guess we'll see. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So a couple motions back, we purchased end loader forks for a replacement of the 76 Alice Chalmers, which we got a 2023 John Deere end loader. So this would be end loader number two?
That's correct.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And moving on, in your packet is another memo from Mr. Anderson, he's been busy, dated May 7th, regarding the siphon line repair. And quite interesting, I really didn't even know this existed, but sure is the world it did appear. So, Mr. Anderson?
Memo in your packets, siphon line repair, the cover on our siphon line that crosses the river behind General Mills has eroded away, and the existing lines didn't need to be lowered. The attached images show the current condition and erosion along the river that has occurred since the siphon lines were installed in 1999. Attached to this memo is a work authorization from CES to complete the fieldwork, engineering, design specifications, and bid documents to complete this work in the lump sum amount of $7,700. I would recommend approval of proposal from CES to complete engineering work required to bid the siphon line repair project in the lump sum amount of $7,700. This work will be paid for from line item 615-836,000. If you look at the pictures, the first picture pretty much sums it up as far as what it looks like today. And interesting to note, you see the time lapse there from various physical images that we got, showing 2024, where you can see two of the three lines are now uncovered. There's actually three lines go there that shows in 2021 and the 2017, basically where those alignments are. And now, like I said, two of the three are, have been uncovered, and that work needs to get done.
Okay. If I- If I could have a motion to that effect, motion by Alderman Snow, thank you, second by Alderman Stevens, thank you. Any questions? Alderman Snow?
So what exactly do these lines do? Are they sewer lines, or, I'm not really familiar?
Yeah, sanitary sewer lines, correct. So they come, that's what comes in from the northeast part of town, crosses the river, gets in the trunk line, that takes it down to the treatment plant.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And item N, moving right along here, easement preparation in your packet for the southwest trunk sewer extension. In your packet is a memo dated May eighth, twenty-twenty-four, from Director Anderson regarding this. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. The next step in our, in our design of the southwest trunk sewer extension to Four Rivers Sanitary Authority is to prepare sanitary sewer easements for review by landowners along the route. Twelve easement documents will be required for this phase of the project. Attached to this memo is a work authorization from CES to complete easement work in the lump sum amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars. On your desk tonight also is the easement exhibit that shows basically the routing and the parcels that are involved, and discussions we're going to have to enter into with those property owners regarding this work upcoming. I would recommend approval of proposal from CES to complete the easement work for the southwest trunk sewer extension to Four Rivers Sanitary Authority in lump sum amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars. This work will be paid for from line item sixty-one-dash-seventeen-ninety. There's been some, let's see, the planning and funding of this through First Rockford is in the works, working on it for the funding. We've been in contact with Cherry Valley, that'll be part of the discussions as well. But again, the next step of this process is to get these easement documents prepared so we can approach the property owners and have those discussions.
And essentially, this will be a project that will allow some of the land that's along the growth corridor in that area to be able to have access to sewer, to be able to, we would hopefully, or we would be able to supply the water. However, the sewer is something that this will satisfy, and we would be able to take advantage of, of being able to court jobs and opportunity, economic investment opportunity. Alderman Snow?
So without getting too deep into the drawings and everything, but the, how does the work, if you're going right through the middle, it's coming from the front street and then on to the garden, so?
Well, it shows the prefer to allow, and shows the elevation and grade. Most of this line can be done through gravity, to the one, one lift station, actually could probably make it all the way gravity, but because of the terrain, some of the trains that's proposed to be going through, it looks like we're going to have one main lift station on this project. So that's part of the discussions with those property owners, and in preparation of this work, we can, we can come up with alternatives where we can physically put it, so that we try to keep it to follow property lines and stuff as much as possible, so it doesn't cut right through the middle. But there are cases, a case in point with the new Yukon, when Yukon was constructed, you know, our trunk sanitary sewer that serves Chrysler goes right through that project. But they were able to design around that so that they could still have their project and not compromise the sewer.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, any other questions regarding the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed?
I didn't get a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. How about a motion? Alderman Snow, thank you, and a second, Alderman Stevens? Thank you. Any other discussion? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. I just had a quick question. Will this affect any residential properties, owners?
Eventually, as, maybe as you recall, we've got, we've, we purchased additional property across Newburgh for expand, for plant expansion. And we can, we can basically double the size of the plant with that property acquisition. And back a few years ago, the cost to do that was thirty million dollars, we could do that in fifteen million dollar increments. That has obviously gone up since then. But at the same time, we looked at the pipe alternative to Four Rivers, and it was less than half the cost to put the pipe in the ground. So that's still a case in point now. So eventually, all of the west, any of the new western, northwest developments, all the way over to maybe far southeast is Pearl area, could all be tributary to Four Rivers.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, then recommend approval of the proposal from CES Inc. to complete the easement work for the southwest trunk sewer extension to Four Rivers Sanitary Authority in the lump sum amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars, to be paid for from line item sixty-one-dash-one-seven-nine-zero. If there are no other questions or comments, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Item N, crew truck replacement in your packet, May eighth, from Director Anderson as well, is a crew truck replacement for the Street Department. Director Anderson?
A memo in your packet, the current Street Department budget includes forty-five thousand dollars for the replacement of our nineteen-eighty-two Chevy crew truck. We have located a used twenty-fifteen Freightliner crew truck at Your Choice Autos in Waukegan, Illinois, that will meet our needs. The list price for this vehicle is twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Based on our inspection of the vehicle and discussions with them, the actual cost to us out the door will be twenty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Therefore, I would request authorization to purchase a used twenty-fifteen Freightliner MT forty-five crew truck from Your Choice Autos in the amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. This truck will be paid for from capital line item forty-one-five-seven-fifty-two-eighty-two-hundred.
Okay, if I could have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Fleury, thank you, second by Alderman Stevens. Thank you both. Any questions, any comments? Alderwoman Gramkowski?
Thank you, Mayor. Will you need to do any upfitting to this after it's purchased?
Not too much. It already has a lift gate on it, comes with it, comes with the racks and stuff. It was a former auto parts vehicle, so it's, it's pretty much set. There's not going to be too much, we'll have to, there's a, there's probably a generator, welders, some things that we'll have to install on it, but otherwise, it should be good to go.
Thank you. I think it was relatively a very good find. Any other questions? Any comments? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And last for you, Mr. Anderson, item O, which is landfill number two, annual services proposal, in a letter as well, dated May eighth, twenty-twenty-four. There's a memo from the, from Director Anderson regarding landfill two, annual services proposal. I thought this was very interesting. We had had some discussions about that. Mr. Anderson?
The county and the city, we've issued a request for qualifications for the annual services required for the operation and maintenance activities required at our Belvidere Municipal Landfill number two. We received proposals from TRC, Brownfield Environmental, and Gemini Engineering. Based on our review of the proposals, I would recommend approval of the proposal from Brownfield Environmental Engineering Resources in an amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars for the annual services required for landfill number two. This work will, is included in our landfill budget, which is account number zero-one-five-three-thirty-five-seventy-nine-hundred.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Thank you both. Brent, is this a reduction in what we currently have paid, or what we paid in the past?
This is, this is a small reduction. We budgeted about, and our costs have run, been running around about fifty thousand dollars, but we have not been real satisfied with our current, our MT is our current, or, I'm sorry, TRC is our current engineering consultant that we utilize for this particular project. And we just have not gotten very far with the IEP, with our negotiations to further reduce our, our, our costs and our work efforts that's being required out there. And so now with the, the solar being located out there as well, there were some conflicts with, between TRC, because they were the engineering consultant for the solar company, as well as trying to represent the county and the city as well, and we didn't think that was a, a very good situation. And we were encouraged with, with what Brownfield, our discussions with them, they're a little bit more local for us, quicker turnaround, and I think they have a very good handle on what we're looking for, what we're trying to get to on landfill number two, and hopefully we'll get there a lot sooner with them on board, so that's, hence the recommendation.
Okay, Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So this is the landfill we share costs with, the county. When I was on city-county, it's always been TRC since I've been here, is the county okay with Brownfield? Have they already okayed that?
Yes, it's going to, I don't know if they've already okayed it, but it is going through their committees and stuff for approval. Yes.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All right, under other, five other, we have item A, please approve expenditure of the IL ETSB grant funds for the purchase of Operator XRVR system. Chief Woody has a memo in your packet dated five thirteen of twenty-four regarding this. Chief? Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. If you would turn to the memo in your packets, the Belvidere Police Department's requesting the purchase an Operator XR virtual, virtual reality training system. The XR's unique system combines cutting-edge simulation software, custom-integrated Internet of Things sensor, enabling frontline personnel to conduct immersive scenarios using their service-specific weapons and equipment. It enhances tactics, techniques, procedures against any virtual adversary across the globe in high-stress, high-risk simulated environments. Operator XR allows departments and personnel to increase training frequency, as well as effectiveness, while reducing training costs. The system before you, that is attached, is valued at fifty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, but the operator company's honoring its original quote of forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars that was requested and awarded by the Illinois Training and Standards Board Recruiting and Retention Grant and accepted by the council. I would request a motion approving the purchase of an Operator XRVR training system at a cost of forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars, to be paid by the Illinois Training and Standards Board Recruitment and Retention Grant.
Okay, could I have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Stevens, thank you, second by Alderwoman Gramkowski, thank you both. Any questions or comments regarding the motion on the floor? Alderman Albertini, first, please.
Thank you. I see they have options for this stuff as well. Are we looking to acquire any of the options to go with this?
No, not at this point. We're going to just stay true to what we requested in the grant, and once we get some training time with the system, see if some of these options might be right for our department. So, no, not at this time.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again, Mayor. So Chief, I think this is super cool, and it's awesome that it is coming from grant money. My question is, will you be needing to budget in the future for software upgrades and, and that type of stuff, do you think?
Yeah, with any internet-based type of software, there's going to be additional costs year to year. Currently, there's one year included at eighty-five hundred dollars, so going forward, that could be a potential cost, something that we could look for writing in additional grants, asset forfeiture through the budget process. But when I spoke with the sales rep, he said that if we decided not to go with the extension in terms of the software, we wouldn't get any more upgrades, but the system would still function.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Thank you, Chief, for going out and getting that grant. Item B, we have approved expenditure of the IL ETSB grant funds for the purchase of fitness equipment in your packet, again, is a memo dated May thirteenth from Chief Woody regarding the purchase of the fitness equipment. Chief?
Thank you, Governor. The police department's requesting the purchase fitness equipment. Our department has always put an emphasis, emphasis on fitness. To date, our weight room consists of donated equipment that either doesn't work and need to repair, or made, not made for the frequent use that it gets from our officers. The department is requesting fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars through the Illinois Training and Standards Board Recruiting and Retention Grant, which was awarded and accepted by the council. A copy of the commercial invoice is attached and outlines the equipment we would like to purchase from pound-for-pound fitness equipment with a total cost of fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. I would request a motion to approve the purchase of fitness equipment from pound-for-pound fitness equipment at a cost of fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars, to be paid by the Illinois Training and Standards Board Recruitment and Retention Grant.
Okay, if I could have a motion by Alderman Fleury, second by Alderman Albertini, thank you both. Any questions regarding that, again, that was going out and chasing the grant? So, for those funds. Alderman Albertini?
Thank you. Okay, you were saying on the old equipment, people weren't using it anymore, and it's outdated and it's broken, that's why we're getting rid of it. This purchase of stuff you're showing here, was this reviewed by the officers as stuff they would want to use or would use?
Yeah, well, we have a piece of, well, a lot of it is your typical standard cardiovascular equipment, treadmills, ellipticals. One is a cable machine that is going to be typical within your gym setting. Many of us, including several of the officers that work out, lift weights, so on and so forth, these are all standard pieces of equipment that is going to be utilized by numerous people.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other question? Alderwoman, Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again. So what are you guys going to do with the old equipment?
We'll probably just end up either throwing it away or salvaging it.
Any other questions for Chief Woody? Okay. When you look at the list, this is, this will be some good equipment, last a long, last a lifetime, probably. All right, if there are no other questions, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Moving on, item C, accept donation from First Baptist Church, in your packet is a memo, again, dated May ninth, from Chief Woody, to accept donations. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. If you would turn to the memo in your packet, be advised, the police department's received a donation from First Baptist Church in the amount of two-hundred-and-ten dollars. They've requested this donation be used for our K-9 program. I would request a motion to accept a donation of two-hundred-and-ten dollars, check number two-six-four-three-four, from the First Baptist Church, to be used for equipment for our K-9 unit.
Okay, could I have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderwoman Gramkowski, thank you, and a second by Alderman Albertini, thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Item D, approve expenditure of IL ETSB grant funds for wellness check, in your packet, again, dated the thirteenth of May, is a memo to us regarding, from Chief Woody, regarding the approval, approval for wellness checks. Chief Woody?
Thank you again, Mayor. The Belvidere Police Department is requesting approval to authorize officers to start making appointments for an additional wellness check. The department requested fourteen thousand and eighty- The department requested fourteen thousand and eighty dollars through the Illinois Training and Standards Board Recruiting and Retention Grant, which was awarded and accepted by the council. I would request a motion to approve the expenditure of fourteen thousand eighty dollars for wellness checks for Belvidere Police Department officers to be paid by the Illinois Training and Standards Board Recruitment and Retention Grant.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens, thank you. Any questions regarding that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Item E, school safety zone cost-share discussion. So, we had talked about making the school safety zones, starting out with Washington School. There was an estimate, I believe it was four thousand twenty-seven dollars and, I don't know, seven cents, I think it was, or four thousand twenty-three dollars and seven cents. But anyhow, Mr. Anderson and I had went to the school board to their committee meeting, to a committee meeting, and had asked for, to make the cost share, share with the city half of that amount, roughly two thousand dollars. When I was there, I was asked questions regarding how much city ARPA funding we'd received, which I answered that question for them, how we had spent it, I answered that question, and what we had left, which I answered that question. Later on, whenever it went back to the school board, I'd watched their meeting, somebody had called me and said, hey, you might ought to take a look at the meeting, and I see that they had, had not mentioned that I had answered any of the questions. As a matter of fact, they had used that as a question about whether or not the city should go ahead and fund that in its entirety. And so anyhow, I did hear back from them in a letter. They basically passed on it. The comment was at the, at their board meeting that perhaps the city should pay for that all. I thought that us, Brent and I, Mr. Anderson and I going there, answered the questions that they had. We also have to keep in mind that that's just one school, one location. They have other ones, and there will be other school zones. So I wanted to bring that back before you. They had mentioned that more or less, it was about calling the city on whether or not they would actually not do any of that work if they didn't participate. I've al, always felt that student safety is a huge, is a hu, is, is a big thing. I also think that, well, I know that the school district received much more ARPA funding than what the city did, and I didn't think it was disingenuous at all to ask that they share in those costs, not at all. I did put in a FOIA request asking how much money that they did receive in ARPA funding, and what they've spent, what they have left, and what they spent it on. Same questions I was asked off the cuff. So it's up to the council how you want to proceed before Mr. Anderson's got his hand up. Mr. Anderson?
Just to update, we are in discussions, both the county and the city are in discussions with the school district about a possible safe routes to school grant application that would be presented, be submitted by the, the school district, covering all of their schools, possibly, both located in the city and outside of the city limits. And for example, the Washington Street, part of the, one of the components that we reviewed was the crosswalk locations and additional crosswalk work. Those are the types of things that would be covered by a safe routes to school program grant, which is a hundred percent grant eligible. So we are still working with the school district in regards to that, so I think really the main issue now would be the, the establishment of those school zone speed limits.
I would hope that, I would, I would hope that we would be able to get some funding. I did want to make sure that whether or not they wanted to proceed with Washington School ahead of time, I think that was their first project request. I don't know what the timeframe would be regarding information, but I did want to bring the coun, the council up to speed as to what their answer, or what my request, what our, our discussion was at council level and what the follow-up was. So anyhow, we can, we'll see what, what kind of funding that we get regarding safety zones and go from there, but I don't think I'm, until we hear back from there, I don't think that we should expend the four thousand dollars in its entirety. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So we, we did a study, right? We, didn't we just do a study on that, at, for Washington School in particular? Is that study complete, and what did they come back with that? Because I do think Washington School is, is not very safe for the kids. The other ones I, I think are okay, but Washington in particular, I think, needs to be addressed.
Well, the, the recommendations were submitted to us by the school district based on their review of Washington School on the campus and what activities. So we took a look at that and made some alterations, changes, recommendations on, were across some different locations for crosswalks and stuff that's could work, and that was what was submitted back to them for review. The, the school speed zone areas are, it's an elective, it's not a requirement, that's why there's, there's, not all schools have them. All schools are possibly to have them, but that's a decision that the school district themselves could make. And again, they are looking, our initial discussions with school district on the safe routes to school grant application and those crosswalks, additional sidewalk improvements and so forth, they were going to, they had what they needed for Washington, they were in the process of gathering the additional information for the remainder of their facilities to package that up into one application to, to be submitted. So that's what we're waiting on right now.
I, I think that, you know, like, Meehan has an, has an issue with the, the traffic flow, the drop-off and pickup of students, and I think maybe Lincoln as well, but I think Washington is a lot more walkers that are impacted.
Correct, and again, that's why we're, we're working with them to put up an application for, for each and all sites, even the New Junior High and, and stuff off of Bulwark Road, there's some access issues and things they're looking at there as well.
Any other questions? Alderman Albertini?
Thank you. This Washington School, is this the one that we already approved, a school speed zone for this area yet? Or is this a different school?
That's the one that was brought for council, and then the, the council indicated their desire to see if the school district would be, would fund it on a partnership basis. So it was never finalized yet because we're waiting for word back on the, on the school district's funding option.
Okay, and I thought we already did finalize that, we were just after that gonna propose to them any further discussion, so, in other words, this school's not gonna get their speed zone until we can get their decision on whether we can get funding for half of it, or they pay half of it. And so we're gonna put our students at jeopardy because of the two thousand dollars.
Well, I think what, as Mr. Anderson indicated, that, that's a decision they'll make based upon any kind of a funding, and that's the decision they made. They could certainly, we had proposed sharing half of that with them. They chose to go ahead and seek funding to be able to address all of their schools in part of the grant application. So I think until we get that information back, see what it is, I think that would be the, the way to go. And like I said, the city, I think we were, we, we had went to them with a half, with a cost sharing, and, you know, they passed on that. And Alderman Snow first?
Do, do we need to have a resolution so we can present that to them as a consolidated thing that we voted on a resolution that they should pay half the cost?
I don't think it's any secret that, you know, we had, we had done it in a public, public setting, we did it again here tonight. You know, I think that, you know, I don't know, I mean, to me, you know, and to the council, it appeared that that was going to be the offer that we were gonna place. If they choose not to do it and wait until they get either funds to do it, then that's fine. Maybe we'll get the funding all at once for not only Washington, but the, the other schools as well. Alderwoman Freeman?
What exactly was that?
Uh, there's a, there was cost share on some additional sidewalk work for the crosswalks, some additional pavement markings for crosswalks, all the signage required for the, the school zones, and there's a lot of signs involved with establishment, because you have to have both entering and leaving school zone signage on each of those, so there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, so there's eight locations coming and going, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other comments? Alderman Fleury?
Right, so even though there aren't school zone signs, I mean, it's still, the speed limit is twenty miles per hour, that's a fact, right? Or, I mean, as I'm saying right now, they, you could go by the school at thirty miles an hour?
No, all, all, city council has already approved that, well, residential streets are twenty-five unless posted otherwise. So the school zone takes you down to twenty miles an hour, and it also provides for larger fines for violations within that area. That's the difference between, so you're going from twenty-five to twenty, and, and higher fines possible.
Right, but even though we don't have signs, that's still the law there, because it's a school, right?
No, it's not.
Not, not without the school zone.
State statute makes the school zone, the speed limit approximate to a school, twenty miles an hour. That's not effective until the signs are placed. So if there's no signs, it's, in our community, twenty-five in most places. Keep in mind also, and this is something that a lot of people don't understand, that school speed limit really is not effective when people think it is. It's only effective when children are in such close proximity to create a hazard. So it might save from, I think, it's usually like seven AM to two PM or something like that. If the kids are in class, it's not twenty miles an hour, so whatever the speed limit is on the road. It's only when the kids are in proximity. Hopefully, people are slowing down then anyway, because I know I do, but it's not all day long.
Yep. Any other questions? All right, we'll see how, we'll see how those, that application goes, and see what direction it takes us. Also, in your packet, building planning, Belvidere Planning Department Annual Report, you can take a look at that for your reading pleasure. Thank you, Gene. And that's all we have on the agenda. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Motion by Alderwoman Gramkowski, and a second. Second by Alderman Snow, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to stay? All right, for the record, we adjourned at seven twenty-one PM. Thank you, everybody.